Have your attention, please. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular Wilmington City Council meeting, February 2nd, 2023, Groundhog Day. May we have a roll call, please?
Jonathan McKay.
Here.
Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Leirman.
Here.
Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Eblin.
Here.
Matt Perkey.
Here.
Seeing everyone present, will you stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in brief public silence. Thank you. Under the President's agenda tonight, you have the approval of the agenda. What is your pleasure? Move to be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion by McKay, second by Osborne. To accept the agenda as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The opposed? The agenda is accepted. We also have before you the meeting minutes of the January 19th regular meeting. What is your pleasure?
Move to be accepted as presented?
Second.
Motion second to accept the minutes as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And your votes. Minutes are accepted. We also are announcing a public hearing on March 2nd, 2023, on a petition for a planned unit development B and D of 28.60 acres, more or less, or commonly known as 1057 North Lincoln Street. That's all I have.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I have two questions I would like to ask you, Mayor. Is the procedure at public hearings going to be the same as the council procedures back then that they need to sign in and do that? Does it look like comments being held to the end of the House of Congress?
Yeah, but everything's going to be the same. Other than they have to sign in and follow any new guidelines that we may have established. And I would point out that the guidelines are scrolling on the screen, so if you have any questions, but then, have I answered that question or not?
Yeah, but they'll, we have two sign up sheets, one for the public hearing and then one for the, yeah, the open session.
Yes, it'll be separate.
Oh, I see what you're asking. And, well, thank you, Councilman. All right. And don't forget to sign up if you didn't wish to speak at the, for the open building session. That is all I have, Mr. Mayor. You have a lot of stuff tonight. Thank you, Mr. President. You're welcome. I'll do the statements first. In 2022, Wilmington residents witnessed a flurry of construction activity, including rebuilding Romback Avenue, improved downtown pedestrian sidewalks, and traffic flood. Airborne road paving, new bike and walking trails, rehabilitation of the city's water reservoirs, and Longberry Street water line sidewalk and paving condition. The value of these projects totaled $19.5 million, more than 78 percent of which was financed by grants, fulfilling a promise I made to taxpayers to leverage local taxes with available state and federal funds. Our code enforcement department experienced as busy as it did in decades, cleaning up problem areas in the city, working with property owners to fix more than 250 serious code violations, and organizing citywide cleanup initiatives. Our code enforcement managers were hard to use light to discourage petty crime and vandalism, problems that remain stubborn and difficult to solve. Our police and fire departments continued important growth in 2022. Our 9/11 call emergency center added needed dispatchers. The phone's not working.
Not working.
Can we start clear all?
Just started beginning of that.
Well, let me see. I think I was talking about discouraging. Our police and fire departments continued important growth in 2022. Our 9/11 call center added needed dispatchers, and our police and fire departments operated with full staffing authorized by city council. In addition to an active shooter situation in 2022 and serving many high-threat search warrants, our police department fully engaged in a community-wide effort to find solutions to our homeless and vagrancy issues that have plagued our city for decades. In 2022, the city experienced many changes in leadership. Welcoming Jessica Powell as Director of Transit, Brad Reynolds as Human Resource Director. Promotions included Ron Fitton to serve as Chief of Police, Steve Honeycutt to Waste Water Superintendent, Adam Simpson to Water Superintendent, Kirby Kelvner to Cemetery Superintendent, and Andrea Takarante to Deputy Service Director. We have assembled a great team of hard-working, conscientious people tasked with providing excellent service to citizens while keeping a watchful eye on budgets and spending. The city also experienced a surge of growth in private sector investments in 2022. Fourteen new single-family homes were started in 2022, with nearly 400 more ready for construction or planned. Existing businesses, including Melara's, finished major expansions. Health Source of Ohio launched a major expansion downtown, and the general dent construction addition with a rooftop deck. We have new Kettering healthcare facility under construction on Romback, and a new Chico Village restaurant. When I worked on this journey with the citizens of Wilmington in 2016, the city was a very different place. I ran on a platform of better roads, more code enforcement, and strong safety services. And to that end, the citizens of Wilmington put their trust in us by agreeing to share their hard-earned money in the form of earnings tax. They did this hoping that we'd do what we promised. And I believe we have done just that. Our growth in '22 is a direct result of important work done the last set of years. Strong police and fire services, tighter neighborhoods, removal of blighted properties, better roads and improved infrastructure, extensive trail system, and hard-working and helpful public service, all help to create a community that draws economic development. This growth is also built on the shoulders of leaders that came before us. This year, we entered into a major water sales contract with Fayette County and supported the new Honda battery plant in Jeffersonville. This was only possible because of earlier city leaders, among them Nick Eblin, David Riss, Bob Holmes, David Ockaday, Tom McMillan, and others had the vision of a regional water supply from Caesar's Creek Lake. This contract with Fayette County were forever approved, the fiscal picture of Wilmington's Water Department. As pleased as I am with our work in 2022, I am also excited about what's ahead in 2023. In the spring, we will begin rehabilitation of David's Drive, one of our largest road projects in recent memory. This ODOT-led project will rebuild David's Drive from the base up. The first phase, approximately one mile of road, is estimated to cost $3.1 million. Service Director Brian Shattaker and his team have procured funding to cover the first phase. The rest of David's Drive is estimated to cost $6.6 million, and we are actively securing funding now. David's Drive is a major economic quarter for the city, and its restoration represents a key future for growing new jobs and opportunity. The city will also break ground on the new wastewater treatment plant in 2023. The new facility will provide more sewer capacity and enable us to stay compliant with increasing stringent EPA requirements. The additional sewer capacity will also be an economic driver for the city and the county. In 2022, we also saw a significant increase in citizen participation in our governments, a very hopeful sign for our future. In 2023, city leaders will begin work with Clinton County Regional Planning Commission and residents in the Grant and Duckle Street neighborhood to focus on a major revitalization project in Rampton. The Clinton County Coalition of Homeless, the Wilmington International Association, Wilmington Police Department, along with citizens' watch groups are actively working to find ways to remedy problems associated with homelessness and vagrancy. Volunteers participating in the cleanup. Wilmington initiatives started by our code enforcement department have got an impressive amount of trash pickup and beautifications throughout the city. If we all work together, we can accomplish great things. The contribution of our employees to this community have not gone unnoticed. On January 25th, code enforcement official Anna Pence, the Chief of Police Ron Fitton were listed for seasonal awards in the government and public service category. Congratulations to these fine boys on this well-deserved recognition. As we enter 2023, after the conflict that our growth trend will continue, I am proud of who we are, what we have accomplished this year, and what we are prepared to do together. I want to personally thank city employees, city council, and other elected officials, our dedicated civic organization churches and street ministries, and our citizens for your part in making 2022 a great year. We still have much to do, but we are up to the task. Let's get to work. Respectfully, John Stapleton, Mayor. Now, if I could have Thomas Couch, William Foster, and Kelly Rogers go up front. Mr. Frank, pleasure, I can't swear in here, you police officers.
Hi, everybody. This is my son, Tiana. This is my mom, Lisa, and this is my very good friend, Don Hope.
This is Alicia. Let's see if I can get it by the back of your head. Emlyn, Aubrey, Harper, Harland, and Hannah.
This is my wife, Mary, and then my parents are in the back.
Alicia, right hand, repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Thomas Couch, Foster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
And the ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
That I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
Partially discharge.
All, and perform all duties.
And perform all duties.
And incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
With the police department.
With the police department.
For the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
For the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
Do the best of my ability and understanding.
Do the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do, as I shall answer unto God.
This I do, as I shall answer unto God.
William. Come in, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Law Director. You're not sworn in as a officer. You're not a sargent. We're here to do it up. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Are you ready? I, William Foster.
I, William Foster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the ordinances of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
And the ordinances in the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
All duties incumbent upon me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
As a sergeant with the police department.
As a sergeant with the police department.
Of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
Of the City of Wilmington, Ohio.
Do the best of my ability and understanding.
Do the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do, and I shall answer unto God.
This I do, as I shall answer unto God.
We've got to write this down. All right. What do you think? Can you hear me? It's awesome. Thank you. Auditor Vance.
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Shattaker, he's not with us tonight. I don't believe there's any report from that department. Thank you. All right, under Council Committee Reports in Action, City Revitalization Committee, Mr. McKay.
We do have something, Mr. President, that has been promised for a very long time now, so I'll get to it. The City Revitalization Committee met, and there is a very simple resolution before you that is basically going to turn the retained hotel lodging tax, to simplify everything towards the commit. There is a committee that doles out these funds, of retained hotel lodging tax funds, that we appropriate a city council. And they need it cleaned up. Nobody really knew who had authority to do what, when, and where, and how, and we didn't know who needed to ask whom. So this will turn that over to the committee. It will also have new designees, and that was something that needed to be updated as well, as the city no longer had some of the folks on the books that were part of that committee. And so the city auditor will have a designee, the executive director of the Clinton County Regional Planning will designate, and the mayor will designate. And this will be a whole lot cleaner, and we will, the city council will receive reports of the retained hotel lodging tax funds that have been doled out to the entities of 501(c)(3) and/or governments. Those are the only people that are allowed to apply for these funds. They are not for private business or anything of that nature, so, and that was decided a long time ago. And for those that do not know about the retained hotel lodging tax funds, that comes from a tax that people pay when they stay at a hotel in the City of Wilmington, Ohio. And some of that goes to the city, some of that goes to the CDB, and there's other, there's other things there, but that's, that's the long and the short of it. I want to ask, is there any questions from city council about this before we go on, or comments? Okay. We are just going to have the first reading tonight, and then I'll, then we'll have the second and third reading at the next meeting. There was no need to do this as an emergency, and Brad, there still hasn't been anything coming for the first order. Okay. And so with that, Mr. President, I'll move for the first reading of Resolution 2009.
Second.
Motion by McKay, second by Osborne. First reading, Resolution 2009. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed? May we have the first reading, please?
The resolution establishing a city revitalization grant committee, authorizing said committee to adopt a application ad for the city revitalization grant program.
Okay. So that's all we have?
That's, that's all I have, and I ask for second and third reading at the next council meeting. That's all we have, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Service Committee, Mr. Eblin.
Mr. President, we don't have any legislation this evening, however, I will update you on one thing. It was discussed in committee meetings some time ago, and then I was calling up the council about the need for handicap parking places on South Street in the center part of the block by Courthouse. Got a call from Commissioner Brendan Woods, and Brendan said she had talked with her fellow commissioners, and they're really kind of anxious about that. They think it's a great thing to do, and so I just want to bring that to attention, given that they're blessed.
Thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mr. President. We only have about one legislative item to read until ordinance 2306, about the issuance of notes for landfill not to exceed $1,150,000 will be covered by bonds later. A little caught, I can't, I'm very sick today, so I can barely talk, so I'll wait for Auditor Vance to explain this, let him pitch document there to the council.
I, I want to, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me? Okay, that's better. Give a shout out to Councilman Osborne, who must have fallen asleep 14 times reading this entire document. And I'm very impressed he gets the star for tonight for doing that. But we do have a section that has two conflicting, it is on page.
Four.
Four of what we have in front of us, and it says that the city shall not, that the interest cost shall not exceed, it says 4 percent, but 5 percent in parentheses. So we will do a correction, and it should be the 5 percent, but what, notes, these are considered bond anticipation notes, which means we're borrowing money to continue, we borrowed the money, the $2 million originally, and it's been being paid down. These come due once a year. Notes are issued in anticipation of possibly issuing bonds, but bond issues, notes and bond issues are very confusing for even me, but for most people who do not have to handle them. This is boilerplate language, and we have to plug in a note, or this, these amounts, these percentage amounts. We don't know what our interest rate's going to be until the notes are sold. What happens is these go out on the market, typically it's a bank who will buy these for their portfolio, and then when we come, they come due. Bond issues are basically usually for a big project. A water plant. When we issued, when we built the water line to Caesar's Creek, we issued bond anticipation notes all the, every step of the way as we built that water line and the intake structure and everything in order to do that. At the end of the project, then we issued $11 million in bond issues, and those are for like 20 or 30 years. Notes give you the opportunity to pay them off in a year's time. And so that's the beauty of being able to issue bond anticipation notes, even though we won't issue bonds for this. But this would be a, because we're, we're paying them down, four and $500,000 every year from revenues of the landfill. So a lot of what you have here is boilerplate, and I'm impressed if you read it, and I really am. Did I muddy the waters completely? Is everyone now completely confused and have no idea what notes and bonds are? We could have, you know, we could have a class on bonds and notes someday, and we'll still be confused, but that's the basis of why there's so much documentation, having to do this, because they have to put it in as if we did intend to issue bonds. Our intention is not to, is to keep reissuing these and paying them down, and within the next two to three years, these should be gone. And we didn't have to pay legal, all the legal fees that a bond issue does, and it's not a debt that's out there for 20 to 30 years for a piece of money that we can pay off in the short term. That's the beauty of a note. I apologize for the typo, but we can do a correction to that for your readings tonight. If anyone has any questions at all, any other questions? And if you did read it, put your hand up, and I'll give you a half a story. Because Bob gets the big story.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Motion by Albright, second by Osborne. First reading, Ordinance 2306 is corrected. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The opposed? May we have first reading, please?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,150,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying maturity, together with other lawfully available funds in the city, the city's outstanding series 2022 landfill notes, and paying related lawful costs of issuance, authorizing a purchase agreement and registrar agreement, and declaring in accordance.
Move to Assistant Rules and Regulations, the ordinance 2306, second reading, my title.
Second.
Motion second for suspension of rules. Roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
Motion carries. May we have second and third reading, please?
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of notes in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $1,150,000 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying maturity, together with other lawfully available funds in the city, the city's outstanding series 2022 landfill notes, and paying related lawful costs of issuance, authorizing a purchase agreement and a registrar agreement, and declaring in accordance.
Pass ordinance 2306, second.
Motion second for passage. Roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perkey?
Yes.
And McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2306 is corrected. Ordinance 2306 is corrected. Passes.
No additional items, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albright. Appreciate you making it tonight. All right. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perky.
Uh, yes. We do have a few things to discuss tonight. First thing on our agenda is a piece of legislation that we carried over for a third reading from our last meeting. This is ordinance 2301. This is amending the existing ordinance, increasing pay for the city workers. If you remember, at our last meeting, we did not have the rates listed for fire, police, and dispatch probationary rates, so those are included here in our, in our legislation tonight. Did everybody get a chance to look over this? We just wanted to make sure that everything was included in, before we pass this, so. Are there any questions? I mean, the blanket statement to it is it's a 2% increase for all of our non-union employees, so. No questions, comments?
Okay.
Seeing none, I'll move for the third reading of ordinance 2301 by title only.
Second.
We have motion by Perky, second by McKay. First reading, ordinance 2301, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
Second.
Motion for third reading, please.
There comes the third.
Yeah. So sorry. An ordinance amending ordinance number 02208 to increase wages under the employee pay plan for calendar year 2023, and declaring in emergency.
Pass.
All right, move to pass ordinance 2301 as read.
Second.
Motion, second for passage. Roll call, please.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
And Snar?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2301 passes.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, I've got a message that no one can hear these mics on the recording, so I'll just try to talk louder if anybody has any issues. We can pass the handheld around, but, uh, so, uh, moving forward, the next item on my agenda is Resolution 2302. This is adopting our public records policy. Uh, we're asking for a third reading of this tonight. Have there been any questions or concerns that have come up in the last two weeks about this? Okay. If there are none, I'll go ahead and move for the third reading of Resolution 2302 by title only.
Second.
Motion, motion by Perky, second by Leirman, for third reading, Resolution 2302. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Third reading, please.
A resolution adopting a revised city of Wilmington public records policy.
Thank you. Uh, move to pass Resolution 2302 as read.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, Resolution 2302. Roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2302 passes.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on my agenda is a second, third reading on ordinance 2304. Uh, if you remember, at our last meeting, we had a discussion, uh, increasing shift differential for our water department workers, uh, that are working our, our second shift. Uh, and we worried if a dollar amount rate this increases, this changes it to a percentage based rate. Uh, and I think Rick kind of had a, we, we spoke through that in our last, our last meeting, but, um, happy to entertain any questions or comments if you have them. No? Okay. Seeing none, I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give a second and third reading on ordinance 2304 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by Osborne, for suspension of rules, ordinance 2304. Roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading, please?
An ordinance amending certain sections of chapter 133, employment provisions of Wilmington codified ordinances.
Uh, move to pass the ordinance as read.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, ordinance 2304. Roll call, please.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2304 passes.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on my agenda is a second, third reading on ordinance 2304. Uh, if you remember, at our last meeting, we had a discussion, uh, increasing shift differential for our water department workers, uh, that are working our, our second shift. Uh, and we worried if a dollar amount rate this increases, this changes it to a percentage based rate. Uh, and I think Rick kind of had a, we, we spoke through that in our last, our last meeting, but, um, happy to entertain any questions or comments if you have them. No? Okay. Seeing none, I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give a second and third reading on ordinance 2304 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by Osborne, for suspension of rules, ordinance 2304. Roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2302 passes.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on my agenda is a second, third reading on ordinance 2304. Uh, if you remember, at our last meeting, we had a discussion, uh, increasing shift differential for our water department workers, uh, that are working our, our second shift. Uh, and we worried if a dollar amount rate this increases, this changes it to a percentage based rate. Uh, and I think Rick kind of had a, we, we spoke through that in our last, our last meeting, but, um, happy to entertain any questions or comments if you have them. No? Okay. Seeing none, I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give a second and third reading on ordinance 2304 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by Osborne, for suspension of rules, ordinance 2304. Roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2302 passes.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on my agenda is a second, third reading on ordinance 2304. Uh, if you remember, at our last meeting, we had a discussion, uh, increasing shift differential for our water department workers, uh, that are working our, our second shift. Uh, and we worried if a dollar amount rate this increases, this changes it to a percentage based rate. Uh, and I think Rick kind of had a, we, we spoke through that in our last, our last meeting, but, um, happy to entertain any questions or comments if you have them. No? Okay. Seeing none, I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give a second and third reading on ordinance 2304 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by Osborne, for suspension of rules, ordinance 2304. Roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Motion carries, may we have second, third reading, please?
An ordinance amending certain sections of chapter 935 cemetery rules and regulations of the Wilmington codified ordinances.
Uh, move to pass the ordinance as read.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, ordinance 2304. Roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
And Snar?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2301 passes.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, I've got a message that no one can hear these mics on the recording, so I'll just try to talk louder if anybody has any issues. We can pass the handheld around, but, uh, so, uh, moving forward, the next item on my agenda is Resolution 2302. This is adopting our public records policy. Uh, we're asking for a third reading of this tonight. Have there been any questions or concerns that have come up in the last two weeks about this? Okay. If there are none, I'll go ahead and move for the third reading of Resolution 2302 by title only.
Second.
Motion, motion by Perky, second by Leirman, for third reading, Resolution 2302. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Third reading, please.
A resolution adopting a revised city of Wilmington public records policy.
Thank you. Uh, move to pass Resolution 2302 as read.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, Resolution 2302. Roll call, please.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
And Snar?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2301 passes.
All right. Thank you very much. The next item on my agenda is a second, third reading on ordinance 2304. Uh, if you remember, at our last meeting, we had a discussion, uh, increasing shift differential for our water department workers, uh, that are working our, our second shift. Uh, and we worried if a dollar amount rate this increases, this changes it to a percentage based rate. Uh, and I think Rick kind of had a, we, we spoke through that in our last, our last meeting, but, um, happy to entertain any questions or comments if you have them. No? Okay. Seeing none, I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give a second and third reading on ordinance 2304 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by Osborne, for second for second, Resolution 2304. Roll call, please.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
Eblin?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Leirman?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Albright?
I know there's a, there's a lot in here, but it's essentially establishing a potential city, city sponsored animal welfare program.
Right. So one of the things, if, when the city does a trap neuter, release, or return program, one of the things that you do is, so you, you trap community cats or, or feral cats and you neuter them, but then you return them to where you found them. You don't want to take them elsewhere because if you just remove them from the city, then new ones come in. So you just, it's a return policy. And our ordinances currently say that you cannot abandon a domesticated companion animal or a companion animal, and they're considered companion animals. So when it says that the things that are in the current ordinances do not apply to a city sponsored animal control program, that is why.
Yeah.
And then the other part is about feeding is.
Outdoor feeding, yes.
Outdoor feeding, trying to find some way to regulate how people feed animals so that we don't have reckless outdoor feeding where folks are just throwing a bunch of feed out and just all the animals are coming. So we're putting restrictions on how you do that. It's not that we don't want people to feed outdoors, we just don't want it to be reckless. And actually, having kind of a controlled feeding program is actually how we'll be able to monitor the cats because they will come to certain areas and we're hoping that we'll have people who will be involved, volunteers who want to help with this program. And those are probably people in the community that are currently feeding cats. They can help us help the problem this way, so.
Yep. We've, we've had a lot of time spent on, what I always perceived was a small problem, but if you measure by the number of calls and complaints I get about it, it's a very large problem of wild cats or feral cats in our community. And so we've, we've worked with several, several different agencies to try to find solutions to that. We were never able to get any traction. One of our own employees, Sam Miller, has done a great job of instituting a program that relies on community volunteers, but kind of being the champion that's going to help get a program like this off the ground. So we found some other surrounding communities who will assist us with that. We found some programs that can be grant funded to help pay for the startup and the cost in traps and things like that. So it's a program that, you know, obviously in the dead of winter, you're not going around trying to spay and neuter cats, so. But it's a program that, you know, we want, we want to try to get ramps up as we warm up this evening, so. Yes, sir.
There's one section in there where it talks about you should not poison a companion animal. And I think that should be changed, that you should not poison any animal. But if you put out poison, you don't know if your neighbor's dog or cat or who is going to get in that poison. I don't think we should poison anything.
Yeah. So it's a very, very valid point.
I think in the Highway Revise Code, that's already taken care of.
We'll investigate it. We'll investigate. So anyone in council have any questions or open it up to the audience at all? I know this has been a very long, lengthy process of us trying to get something started. Clearly, we're not, still not ready to go, but we're trying to clean up the legislation that could be affected by programs we do in the future, so. Appreciate your persistence. And so, I, I give a lot of the credit. I mean, this is, this is Sam's baby, really. She's done a great job of really trying, you know, this is a passion project for her, like I said, but she's done a great job of really pushing forward and finding workable solutions, you know, that we've, we've kind of missed over in what they're, other communities, so. And to Andrea, for, for always helping be a microphone to that platform too, so.
And I believe we've discussed this, or obviously there's some more tweaking, especially with the enforcement mechanisms, some of them are a little practical to that extent. But otherwise, I think, yeah, we're on track.
Yep. Audience, any other questions or? I mean, we're not really, there's no legislation to move forward. We just wanted to put a piece out there to start discussing it so we could find, you know, issues like Don brought up or, you know, things that we can find are inconsistent or, so.
Is it only to more cats or are there dogs involved in this?
Yeah. So the county has a dog program currently. In Rex does a great job, by everything I see. So this is really, what we always found is that there's just no recourse to really take care of cats. There's two shelters in town and they, they do some trap neuter release when they can at their own charity, basically. And we were really looking for a model or someone who's doing something that's more effective. And Fayette County has a very big program. They have, they were willing to partner with us and let us, you know, let volunteers take them over there to, to use, utilize their program. So we're not, we're not ready to put that program in place yet. There's still a lot more logistics and, and things to work out as far as grant funding and things like that. But what we're trying to do with this legislation will be to clean up our existing ones so that if something came, you know, if as a program is introduced later, it would, it would not be a conflict, so. Any other questions? We're, well, obviously this will come to council when it's ready to go. Come to council's legislation, there'll be time for discussion, review, things like that. So just wanted to open it up for, you know, a bit to kind of bring it up tonight, so. Thank you, everyone, for indulging me. I appreciate it. And that's all I have for this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Perkey. Public Works Enterprise Committee, Mr. Snar.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do you have one report tonight to consider, the income tax report, please, if you please?
We will be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion second to accept the income tax report as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report is accepted. Now moving into the portion of council that's open to the public. You're asked to step to the podium. The clerk will call your name. Has everybody signed up to wish us to speak tonight? And we, as I said, we have been scrolling the rules and guidelines that we wish were you following. The clerk will have her timer. And we ask you just to finish up your thought if you do hit to the top level.
Can I also say, also up on this podium is a sign up sheet. If you want a copy of the state of the city emailed to you or a hard copy, you would sign up up there. You didn't say that earlier.
So who is our first speaker?
First up is Jamie Knowles.
It's a small area.
Huh?
It's a small area.
Yeah. I'm not going to read your topic. I just, are you ready to start?
Whatever you want.
Go ahead.
Cool. Just a couple things. One, back in Denver edition, I've noticed a lot over the last six months. Very frequently, there are stop signs in Florence where Catherine Drive comes in. The, that stop sign is one. I mean, literally, people speed up and blow that stop sign every day, run it probably sixty to seventy percent of the time. Matter of fact, last week, I can't remember if it was on the weekend or during, you know, a weekday, long before it. I was taking a walk through my neighborhood, live right there. Went across the street and right there were Brook, my, where basically what happened was at Brook and Florence, I stepped across the street right there, Catherine Drive in Florence, I could see a car. Should have plenty of time to walk at twenty-five mile an hour. I almost got hit. As I stepped four or five steps in the street, they sped up, you could hear them speed up, and no, they weren't even paying any attention. They didn't even see me. Had every intention of just flying back through there. Those cars, they do, they're forty, forty-five back through there a lot. So if we could somehow have a little more, even, even if the police were seeing them back there, that would, I think that may help a little bit. And secondly, regarding ordinance 02307 amendment, talking about the city not being responsible for anything that may happen in sugar grove to headstones and so on and so forth. I know that you guys didn't put it in, but there were families that paid perpetual care on those lots. They expect perpetual care on those lots. Those lots are marked with a piece of steel that says perpetual care. I think you may have a problem with that. That, that's just my thought. I'm actually one of those plot owners, and it's a pretty big plot there in Section 1. Most of Section 1 had perpetual care when they originally did it. So there again, I know you guys bought a bad bill of goods with that, the perpetual care money was truthfully vulnerable way. I, I mean, I know, I know the full story, unfortunately. So I know the problems that we've had with that in the past. So just, just my thoughts on that. I don't know exactly how many people will be affected, but I know I'm, I'm not happy about that. Especially with the, the headstones that are truthfully round and curved, not just in my section, but in multiple sections there. And Section, Section 1 is probably about the worst of it because they are like literally that far off curve. And all I ask is that somebody at least move them back the street, you know? Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Jamie, is it a particular time of day when you've seen traffic violations? Warning, you have.
Truthfully, it's, I've seen it at noon, I've seen it at six o'clock in the morning.
So it.
I've seen it, what happened to me was right at dusk.
Is that where Catherine hits Denver School?
I'm sorry.
Is that where Catherine hits Denver School?
No, no.
No, no. It was back on Florence.
Okay.
So like where Florence, Florence becomes Kelly and like if you're cutting, basically they cut from Lincoln on Florence and cut over Prairie. That's each, I mean, you can, I followed, I don't know how many people doing that.
Jason indicated something about the radar mechanism that might be helping place in there.
Well, that may be, yeah.
You discussed that, probably the chief, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
We used to have, when that stop sign was first put in, there used to be flags. And, and Mary Kate laughs. But yeah, that, that stop sign, people just continuously blow it. And I, and I break it up from time to time, but yeah, it's, it's a very bad.
When these, these people, when they almost, I threw my hands out like, really? I mean, you're going that fast? And they looked at me and I really thought they were going to flip me off at first because my hands started out. When I leaned in towards the window, then they put their hands down and I sped up faster, but.
It's for speed bumps.
We were always taught in driving school that the pedestrian has the right of way. People seem to forget about that. Driving is a privilege, not a right. Yeah. I couldn't agree more, but, yeah. I made a dent if they hit me.
Thank you, Jamie. Who's our next presenter?
Greg Pitzer. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. And there you go.
Well, I'd like to say I'm very disappointed in the City of Wilmington and the police department staying towards my daughter's case. It's been a daunting task to obtain information. And the truth from the start is, it's, it's like no one wants to solve my daughter's case or even talk about the existence of her. The, the exact why we will continue investigating, over the past couple of weeks, we have found some very interesting developments which the police department should have found. Okay? We found the investigation report a detective prescribed in a Walmart video stating the suspect's car did not turn on State Route 73. Maybe that's why they don't want to give me the video, because a lot of police officers lied there on that. Okay? My daughter could not have almost got hit on State Route 73 if the car didn't turn down 73, okay? You see it? You see where it didn't turn? Police reviewed the paper just passed around, noticing the big highlights that refer to the suspect's car stating vehicle tracking eastbound towards Sabina does not slow down or turn onto 73 bypass. Then noticing the next line, line, and just one minute later, according to detective timeline, it states that the same vehicle comes back westbound toward town on Romback, enters parking lot, exit progressway. The same car that picked my daughter up did not turn down 73. Has a narrative been going on ten years. Sad to me for my daughter to die, telling for people to lie. The main eyewitness who said she almost hit my daughter has already changed the story three times, okay? We took her out there and there's no way from her first story that she could have got over and went around that car because she was in the vehicle right there. She would have hit the head before she got around the curb. So then she told us it's on down park. And then it's on down a little farther than that. And that's why she didn't stop is because her husband didn't have her gun and he didn't know what was going on, okay? That case, it was down sprinting across the road and now the location was changed. And the further down the road than her and the subject all agreed it happened. If you look at the subjects, you'll see where they say it happened and where she says it happened. Now she says it happens down park, so. To this day, I still have not seen a Walmart video showing my daughter's last seen alive. Why does the city without the video for me? Where is the video, why can't I see it? Now keep hearing the IT guy for it. Now, this has been three months or more. Well, you gotta use your IT man, if he can't get it in an hour, something's wrong. You know, that's not all I've got to say, but.
Thank you.
Thank all of you, okay?
Thank you.
We have another presenter?
You do. Daryl Petrie. Let me know when you're ready.
Ready. I'm getting sick of wasting my three minutes coming up here talking about records. We've put in a request, records request back in October, November, December. I'm not getting anything. I haven't got one, not one record. You told me last meeting that you got, that this guy was working earnestly on, where's that? We've been waiting on the emails from Mr. Pitts regarding his daughter case since we've been going after this. I mean, it's just excuse after excuse. Mr. Mayor, you're supposed to address this stuff. And part of your duties is to answer questions or respond to people's reasonable complaints. He's had a slew of them and you haven't even said a word, not one single word ever. I want to sit here and use up some of my time and just look at you and ask you. When are you going to say something? When are you going to say something, Mr. Mayor? He wants to be the mayor. Your job's to do something about this, to address his complaint. When are you going to say something, Mr. Mayor?
That's enough.
I'm using my minutes. I'm allowed to, if I agree this is there.
But you're not to threaten someone.
I'm not threatening, I'm asking him, what, frightening with accountability?
I'm asking you to stop that trip and talk.
It's ridiculous. You haven't answered one email, not one message, not a phone call, nothing. Then you go around putting your campaign out, you got holding babies, meeting with religious leaders and holding the police up like some, some dirty politician would do. That ain't going to get you to the next level. That ain't going to get you to the next, to the next, it's going to ruin your campaign there.
You're, you're getting real close.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to. I'm flirting with that edge. Because we're getting sick of it. We're sick of wasting our Thursdays coming up here talking to you people. When's he going to get the video of his daughter last seen alive?
And getting threatened off.
When's he going to get the, when's he going to get the video?
Break it down.
When's he going to get the video? He's been waiting ten years to see his daughter last seen alive.
Right.
Anybody out here who had their daughter die and there was a video of, of that, of that out there and the city was holding it, they're going to want to know, why haven't you released it? Is it because it shows that car didn't get on 73?
Yes.
Is that why? Because i- if that car never got on 73, then that means the whole story that's being told about his daughter is debunked. It needs re-investigated. When are you going to reopen the case, Mayor? Do you have one good single reason why this case is being closed and shut closed? You don't.
There's your man.
I hope you get arrested and go to prison.
That's true.
He will.
If you continue that type of diaphragm, you will not be permitted.
The Constitution says I can, so that's what it says.
You can say certain things, but you cannot threaten someone.
Well, you tell me what I said, they'll threaten you.
You can't do anything.
You can't, thank you. Sir, you're going to have to quit with the BS. That's what, that's what it is. Both of you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have any others?
I'm going to do small because he is a crook. I'm out of here. You're a crook.
All right. That is loud.
Is what it is.
All right. Both of you are.
Are you going to threaten me? Are you going to threaten me? I come up here to ask that worthless piece of crap a question and he don't want to answer nothing. He's over the police department and I told you right in front of all you guys, is he over the police department? And he said no, and not one of you guys stood up and corrected him to say he's over the police department, okay? Why? You don't work for him. We elected you guys, okay? And don't threaten me when I walk out. Kelly ain't a piece of crap. Piece of crap.
All right. We are going to have an executive session, so we need to introduce the topic and clear the room for everyone except those that are invited to stay. I'm not sure. Thank you all for coming. There will not be any legislation out of this.